City Council meeting for December fifteenth, twenty twenty has come to order.
Yes, please.
Will we please stand up for Pledge of Allegiance? Mr. Valdez, would you kindly lead us in Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the republic, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please, standing for more than a silence for our first responders and military members. Please be seated. Before we begin, any folks calling from home, make sure that your devices, phones are on mute, because this meeting is being broadcast. We don't want to inadvertently take off any conversations we want broadcast. So please remember that. At this time? At this time, may I have roll call, please?
Roll call. Councilmember Soto. Councilmember Aguilar. Councilmember King.
Present.
Mayor Protem Garcia.
Present.
Mayor Sama.
Present.
For the record, Councilmember Aguilar is not in attendance, but his absence is excused.
Thank you very much. We have some changes to the agenda. These two conditions, item number one and number three, will be moved after the considered agenda. Council, any objection? If not, then what we'll begin now is, as we all know, tonight is a change in the council where new folks will take over. So at this time, what we did in order, has become a tradition over time, is we have asked a blessing from our chaplain and the priest from the faith temple. So we'll start out with a blessing from our police captain, chaplain Mycon, please. And please stand up.
On the subject, not all files come from you. The Bible says in First Timothy, pray for those in authority, our mayor, city manager, council members, police, society, private, public works, and all those who serve the public service. They will may live a peaceful, quiet life, all honesty and godliness. We pray, Lord, that they uphold the oath that they've taken, not for self-interest or political gain, and that integrity and service truth be utmost in their priorities. Father, I pray that you give them wisdom, they may carry out the duties before them, to protect and defend the rights of his people and the community, to establish just laws and ordinance for his people, and that living shall become a beacon of light for all to see. I pray that you bless their family, bless them in all that they do to bring honor to their name. We ask you to bless our city, and we ask Father God to protect those who fall in that danger and bring them back strong and healthy. I pray this in the name of our Father, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. At this time, again, we have the priest from the faith temple. Please be seated. Huh? Yeah. Okay, at this time, announcements report. Supervisor Rexelio Espinova, are you online?
Yes, I am there.
Supervisor, do you have anything to report tonight, sir?
Well, yeah, just, first of all, I want to thank you, Mayor, for all your years of service to the city of Livingston, being a council member and mayor. I think the community owes you a lot. You know, together we have worked diligently together to, you know, well, you know, do as much as we can to make the lives of every citizen, including ours, in Livingston and Morsete County, you know, to the best of our abilities, and I think that we've done that. We have achieved that together, and I know that, you know, with the rest of the county, with the support of your council and the manager, I think that you've accomplished that. And hopefully, in the future, with the new mayor and the council, they continue to strive that and for, without any personal gain. So I hope that that continues. I also want to thank the city clerk, Tony Silva, for his many years of service as past treasurer and now, you know, clerk for the last, you know, I think six years. So he's put in his time too. I know he decided to retire, and he spends some time in the Azores. And also, along with his sister, the city treasurer, Maria Rivera, I also want to thank them. So, you know, I made some certificates from the county, and I wanted to go, but, you know, like I said, just like everybody else, we don't want to encumber the families of the new electors that want to get sworn in. So we want to make sure that we, you know, keep our social distance. And so I decided, after all, to stay away so that the families can enjoy the swearing in of other new council members. So congratulations, and other than that, I'll keep my comments for next meeting. So I don't want to, you know, we don't want to prolong tonight's meeting for too long. So congratulations, and thank you for your service, and congratulations on the new electors as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. First of all, I want to let you know that over the years, it's been fun, at times challenging, lots of, we did a lot of hard work, and I have lots of faith in the new council. I'm sure they will do just fine. It was a pleasure to work with you, and I hope to work with you at another level. And always, Supervisor, thank you for your service to the community as well.
Thank you.
Mayor, on behalf of the city of Livingston, we'd like to recognize you and thank you for all your years of service as council and as mayor. You have served our city well, and we are really proud to say that you are one of us and that you'll continue to be part of Livingston's leadership and the business activities. So thank you so much for serving Livingston all these years.
Well, thank you, Councilman Soto, I really, really appreciate it. You took the, handing it out, and I won't make full comments in my mayor's announcement, but it was unexpected, and thank you very much. So at this time, we'll go on to staff announcements and reports. Finance, anything to report? Is there any staff members online? Go ahead, sir, you wish to...
Yes, Jose was supposed to, I thought the city manager, we agreed on this reporting out for just today.
Okay. My apologies, Mayor Protem. I saw on the agenda, I just went as was scripted. I will not tell on any staff members, I will not tell on anybody for any reports, okay? So we'll tell on council members for their announcements and reports. And Councilmember King, do you have anything to report, sir?
Yes.
Supervisor, what on... Go ahead, please, sir.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just want to tell Jack, you know, Recreation Committee, that they did a great job for the Christmas parade, and thanks to all the explorers and the police department that helped out. And that'll be it.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Soto, report here.
Can I agree with Councilmember King? The Christmas parade was absolutely fabulous, a great turnout on entries and all the spectators. For council, though, I did receive an application for the appointment of, to be on the Salasine Valley Air Pollution Control District governing board. So those of us that aren't interested, the application came to me, so I have that. And I just want to wish everybody safe and merry Christmas and a healthy continuing year throughout. Also, as a member of the VSW, we are going to be back in session in January, we will have that. Currently, we are soliciting for membership. As you know, I am part of the auxiliary, and I advocate all day long for our veterans. So if you're interested, I would gladly help you with anything that you would need in order to become an eligible member for our VSW. And on behalf of the VSW and auxiliary, I'd like to thank all of those that came out for our fundraising efforts. It's very difficult, because of the closure, we weren't unable to use the facility as we do on a monthly basis, on a weekend basis, to raise the appropriate funds to pay for the building. And I know we've already spoken to our supervisor, as soon as I had an opportunity to speak, but I do know that we received some of those funds, the three hundred and twenty-five thousand that was put in for a grant for the VSW, and we are using that to make upgrades to the building and bring it up to code for eighty-eight. So again, thanks for supporting our veterans. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, anything to report?
Yeah, just a brief, I agree with the other council members about the Christmas parade. It was a great turnout, and thanks to everybody for all the hard work they put in. That's all I have, thank you.
Oh, thank you. And for me, I always thought that the parade was excellent. Got to see different perspectives, see the parade in different areas, if I wouldn't attend. And also, when you're riding on something that's like a convertible, you see Livingston in a different view. You know, when you're riding in a car, you got your windows up or closed, you're seeing it differently. But then, when you're riding a convertible, I saw a lot of things, I didn't, wasn't aware of it, or didn't pay attention to it, it was a great experience. So I thought that was really, really good, and I want to thank the Recreation and everybody else that participated. The parade was made for and by the community, and I hope that we have a lot more of those excellent turnouts. As far as my last comment, as everybody knows, this is my last meeting as the mayor. Elections are done. I ask everybody, regardless of who they voted for, to support our new mayor, our new council. We are a community. These folks are going to take on a resilient task. It is not something that's taken easily or easy. They do it because they have the love for the community. When I first got on the council in nineteen ninety-eight, that's how long it's been, I didn't know a lot about the community, I live here, but when you are on the council, you get a different perspective. So I remember my very first meeting, I remember how the council was and is, lots of good ideas, a lot of it, and there's always difference of opinion. So I ask my new mayor, Juan Aguilar, coming on soon, re-elected councilwoman, Ria Soto, Councilmember Gangnam Dikbang, current Mayor Protem, Raul Garcia, incoming Mayor, Jose Moran, I'm sorry, incoming councilmember, Jose Moran, Catherine Shaw Rodriguez, and everybody. It's okay to have difference of opinion or different thought process. All I ask that you each and everyone learn to work together. You don't have to agree on everything. And I know that because you ran for the betterment of the community, just always remember the purpose that you ran for. In the end, it's the benefit of the community, and that's what you signed up for, and that's all I ask each and every one of you. And to the citizens of Livingston, from the bottom of my heart, I wish to thank everyone that has given me this honor of serving you over the years. For that, I will always be grateful. Thank you very much. So with that, we'll move on to public hearing. And this public hearing is a resolution approving the site plan and design review twenty twenty for construction of a duplex at eighteen thirty-five Ed Street. And this is brought forth by, is Mr. Hatch on the phone? Okay. Okay. What we're going to do, I was just told that this meeting will be continued to the next meeting, item, sorry, but because it was posted as a public hearing, it is, Mr. Mayor, please introduce the item so we can get a public opinion, because it was passed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. So the item before you is a resolution approving the site plan and design review for construction of a duplex on eighteen thirty-five Ed Street in Livingston by Mr. Francisco Barbosa. So the applicant, Mr. Barbosa, is requesting a site plan and design review approval, which is, you've seen about two or three of these in the last year. It's basically a high-density residential area that's zone R three. It's just north, it's, the property is surrounded on the north and south, across from Ed Street to the west by a mix of multifamily developments and single-family homes. To the east is the same general plan designation and zoning, and the existing non-conforming store selling general goods and groceries, you a lot of know this, it's called La Gindita. And then you have the multifamily developments and single-family developments in the vicinity. The construction of the duplex is a project, and therefore it has to abide by CEQA. The product, the project qualifies as a categorical exemption under class thirty-two in sale development. The planning commission actions and recommendation is to hold a public hearing on this request for a site plan and design review, and this took place on November tenth, Mayor. The applicant appeared at the hearing and was available to respond for questions. The project, in terms of fiscal impact, would increase property taxes to the city, and the area is consistent with our general plan. So again, we are recommending that this item be pushed over to the January fifth, since it was listed, and so that gives an opportunity for the public to provide input. So no action today other than pushing it forward to January fifth, which is our regularly scheduled meeting in January.
But because it was listed, we told that's the public hearing.
That is correct.
Okay. So this item is now open to the public. Does anybody wish to make a comment on this item? Last call, does anybody wish to make a comment on this item at this time? Anybody, nobody come forward? Council, any comments? Staff has requested that we move this item to our next meeting in January, or your, actually your next meeting in January. Can I get a motion to move this item to next meeting? I'll make the motion. I have a motion by Mayor Protem, do I get a second?
One second.
Second by Councilman Soto. May I have roll call, please?
Roll call, Councilmember Soto. Councilmember King.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Sama.
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of four to zero.
Thank you. Citizens' comments. This discussion of the agenda allows the members of public to address the city council in any item not otherwise on the agenda. Members of public who recognize the mayor should come forward to the lectern and answer the call. Time is only three minutes, in accordance with the state of the meeting laws, no action will be taken by the city council this evening. For items which are on the agenda, the thing that members of public will be provided opportunity to address the city council items brought up. Does anybody from the public wish to make comment at this time?
Yeah, hello?
Please come forward.
Hello, I'm James.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm calling on behalf of a family member, who is a member of the city. We're curious why the people closest to the city managers are the only ones with modified schedules, while Governor Neesum has stated that HR, billing, and finance are essential employees. Can you elaborate on that?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that again?
We're curious why only the people closest to the city managers are the only ones with modified schedules, while the Governor Neesum has clearly stated that HR, billing, and finance are essential employees. Can you elaborate on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you for your question. This is Jose, the city manager. If I heard you correctly, you were asking related to why there was modified schedules for the finance and HR department, is that what you communicated? That, I think that's what I heard, so I'll go ahead and communicate out. So for the public, for the general, we do have modified schedules at city hall. We rotate different employees, and that way, if there is an outbreak, we don't have everybody exposed. We are following all the different protocols, everything from temperature checks every time they come in in the morning. In addition to that, there's a series of questions that are asked. And the, those employees who are essential, who work out in the different respective areas, we basically communicated to them, you know, to try not to have any contact with the public if possible. And so we follow all the protocols, so we take this disease serious. And the other thing that we have done is, right now, our city hall schedule is only open from eight to twelve, and we make appointments if necessary. So thank you for your question, but we do have modified schedules for our employees.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wish to make comment at this time?
Hello?
Okay. Go ahead, please.
Hello?
Say your name. Go ahead, say your name.
Hi, I'm Fernando Reynoso, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Hi, I'm...
Hi, uh, I'm a resident of Livingston for the last over twenty-five years or so, uh, and I'm very, very, very happy to, uh, to say that the beautification project, uh, and the work that that young man, Joel Aguilar, has been doing, uh, to make the city look a lot better and, um, bring a lot of our culture forth, uh, and celebrate it through art, uh, it's, it's been really great to follow. Uh, I noticed that on Veterans Day, there were flags put up at the welcome sign, um, that seem to be screen prints of different, uh, branches of our military, uh, the military to which I'm a direct product, uh, product of, and I'm very, uh, happy to say that I support the troops. Um, was there any way that we could perhaps not have the flags directly in front of, uh, custom pieces of art, uh, that represent our culture? Is, uh, is there any way that maybe the memorial park would be an appropriate venue for those, those flags instead of at our welcome sign?
So, so, thank you Fernando Reynoso for your comment, we will take those comments under advisement and touch bases with the appropriate due diligence business, and then be able to comment out at a later period, but I thank you for your, for your comments at this time. And so, uh, feel free to give me a call at City Hall, uh, in the city hall, I won't forget, but I want you to give your number over the line, so if you can just contact me tomorrow, that would be wonderful.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else, uh, from home, from home, let's call again, please, say your comments right this time, please? Does anybody that's not here wish to make any comments this time? Anyone? Mr. Valdez, thank you for your patience, go ahead, please, sir.
Well, you, Valdez, here, just wanted to thank you for all your dear service, please work to get you many projects in the, in our town, and you've been a part of a lot of the things that I brought to the community or I put up for the community, including, uh, a, a church event, it's, it's not your religion, but you respect our religion and come to us as well, so I really appreciate that you've, uh, been a great mayor, and, uh, thank you for all your dear service, and I hope that we continue to see you out and about and, and joining all the different things that this city puts together. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Valdez. Okay, uh, now, I will go on to concern, uh, concern agenda. Uh, items on the concerned calendar are considered routine and non-controversial, will be met up by one vote unless a separate action is requested by the city manager or city council member, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the city council or city manager requests that a specific item be removed. Item number five, this is the approval of the warrant registered dated November twenty-four, twenty twenty, our total warrant registered dated December tenth, twenty twenty, approval of minutes meeting held on October sixth, twenty twenty, resolution approving the application for statewide park to eliminate the community through a validation program, grant, program grant fund, number nine, resolution accepting the completion of the Wood Parkway Southbound High Line on Lamp Project, authorize deputy city clerk to file notice of completion with Merced County, and authorize city manager to make final payment of retention monies to for Wolf Construction Incorporated. Number ten, this is a resolution accepting the completion of the twenty twenty thirty two project, authorize the deputy city clerk to file notice of completion with Merced County, and authorize city manager to make final payments of retention monies to VSF International. Does any, uh, councilmembers wish to pull out them for discussion, or city manager? If not, then I will entertain a motion at this time? I think you had it, you have it on mute?
I make a motion to accept this agenda.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Soto, may I, do I have a second? I have a second. I have a second by Mayor Pro Tem Garcia, may I have roll call, please?
Roll call, councilmember Soto.
Yes.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Summer.
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of four zero.
Thank you. And we will now go back to item number one, this is the resolution of the city council of City Livingston confirming the canvas by Merced County registrar voters and declaring the results of the number third twenty twenty municipal election. And Mrs. Narros, oh, go ahead, please. So, so we have a, uh, resolution, uh, so this is to adopt the, uh, confirming the canvas by Merced County registrar voters and declaring the results of the number third twenty twenty. Does anybody from the public wish to comment on this item?
Mayor, this is Trevor Taniguchi from the city attorney's office, I'd be happy to give, uh, a brief introduction to this item if you'd like.
Go ahead, please.
So I, I just wanna say, echo some of the comments before, Mayor, thank you very much from both Jose Sanchez and myself, it's been a pleasure working with you over the years, um, and we really appreciate your service to the city of Livingston. This agenda item, um, as you mentioned, is a resolution that is confirming the canvas by the Merced County voter registrar, excuse me, Merced County registrar of voters, um, declaring the results of November third municipal, general municipal election. The results from that election are that Juan Aguilar Junior has been elected mayor of the city of Livingston for a full two-year term. Uh, additionally, Jose A. Moran and Maria Baptista Soto have been elected for the office of councilmember for full four-year term. Letitia Vasquez Zúrita has been elected as the city clerk of the city of Livingston for a full four-year term, and Ca- Catherine Shell Rodriguez has been elected treasurer of the city of Livingston for a full four-year term. So at this time, um, if we could have the deputy city clerk Monica Sisneros, as well as the, uh, individuals who are present, um, take their oath of office.
Okay, uh.
Oh, excuse me.
They will do.
So, uh, if we could have a, uh.
No, we need to pass a rev- we need to pass the resolution first.
Correct.
And, and a, and, and for the attorney, do we have a minor correction? Uh, councilwoman Maria Soto, not Maria Baptista Soto, but Maria Soto, has been re-elected for four years, just for certification.
My mistake.
No, no, that's quite all right, it's not in the record, but we were advised, and that's where it would be, Maria Soto, councilwoman. So at this time, uh, does the public wish to make any comments on this item at this time?
Um, Mayor, this is Supervisor Espinosa.
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, well, I just wanna congratulate, uh, uh, Juan Aguilar again, uh, Jose Moran, uh, Maria Soto, uh, Letitia Vázquez, and Catherine Shell Rodriguez on their election, and, uh, hope the best, and hopefully, uh, like I said, uh, it's about, you know, giving our, our best for the city of Livingston and, uh, and Merced County, so, uh, hope to, uh, be supportive, uh, in everything they do, and, uh, hope to, you know, uh, hope to work together in the future. Thank you and Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Supervisor Espinosa. Does anybody else from the public? If not, this item is now closed to the public. Council, any comments? Okay, do you have time? Okay, if not, I'd like to make the motion to adopt a resolution, the city of council, the city of Livingston confirming the canvas by Merced County registrar voters and declaring the results of number third twenty twenty. I have a motion by Mayor, do I have a second?
Yes, I will second that.
I have a second by councilmember King, may I have roll call, please?
Roll call, councilmember Soto.
Yes.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Summer.
Have my last legal proper vote, absolutely, and good luck to everybody.
Motion approved by a vote of four zero.
Oh, yeah.
Good. Thank you, everybody.
So at this time.
So now we're gonna be doing the oath of office, and the first person will be councilwoman Baptista Soto, sorry, councilmember Soto.
Well, she brings her children out and stuff, uh, we are going to bring in the other individuals once he exits, uh, before her children exit, and we'll be cleaning after each, uh, group, so that way, yeah.
We follow that protocol.
So if you raise your right hand, and if you're after me, I'm Maria Soto.
I'm Maria Soto.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemy.
Against all enemy.
Fortune and domestic.
Fortune and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without mental, any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
That I will, well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which.
The duties upon which.
I am about to enter, I'm about to enter, congratulations.
Okay, the next person that's gonna be taking their oath is Jose A. Moran, so he is on his way.
So you're gonna repeat after me, if you do a step, you're right on. I'm Jose A. Moran.
I'm Jose A. Moran.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemy.
Against all enemy.
Fortune and domestic.
Fortune and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true, true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation.
That I take this obligation.
Freely.
Freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well.
Well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which.
The duties upon which.
I am about to enter.
I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
The next person that's gonna be taking their oath is Catherine Shell Rodriguez, which is on her way.
So if you raise your right hand, and if you're after me, I.
I.
Catherine Shell Rodriguez.
Catherine Shell Rodriguez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution of the State of California. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemy. Against all enemy. Foreign and domestic. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. That I will bear true faith and allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will-- And that I will. Well and faithfully-- Well and faithfully. Discharge-- Discharge. The duties upon which-- The duties upon which-- I am about to enter. I am about to enter. Congratulations.
The next person taking the oath is Letitia Vasquez Zorita, a city clerk.
Right next to me. So you're going to ask Mr. Lasso, sorry, right now, and repeat after me. I'm Letitia Vasquez Zorita.
I'm Letitia Vasquez Zorita.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the--
That I will support and defend the--
Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemy.
Against all enemy.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear--
That I will bear.
True faith and allegiance.
True faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution--
To the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation--
That I take this obligation.
Freely.
Freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will--
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duty--
Discharge the duty.
Upon which--
Upon which.
I am about to enter.
I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mayor Potem.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Potem. You can take over the meeting at this point and adjourn the meeting.
All right, at this time, we'll be adjourning the meeting. Thank you and congratulations to everyone elected.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.